We good?
Excellent.
Wow. All right, ladies and gentlemen, call the meeting to order. We have a special budget session meeting tonight for the commissioners to share their priorities with the town staff for the upcoming retreat in March. With that said, please stand for the legions. Let the legions to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Decided and open remarks belong to and from town manager Chancellor.
Hello, Mayor, board members. We are here this evening for phase two of our priorities that the town is moving forward with. And just for the general public, we met in last month, early January, to allow the board to do something unique that we've not done before, which is hearing directly from our department heads. And so at that particular session, each department head actually presented the board with their priorities based on the needs of the departments. Well, since that time, our elected has actually digested those priorities that were presented, and now they are presenting them back to us. And what I think is very important about this strategy is that this set of priorities will allow us to move forward with a meeting we had later this month with the delegation that will be presented. It'll allow us to also have a plan of action and a strategy as we move forward with the current budget session. So that's what I think is most important about what we're doing this year with this cycle. And I guess I turn it over to you guys to present what your priorities are that you want us to move forward with for the next this weekend.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor. Well, it's our turn. So I guess I'll start with one end and we'll work our way through. Anyone who want to go first?
My thoughts on the matter of what needs to be on the budget. I've got a complaint about the Jack White bike path improvement. If we can discuss that and find out who was staying on the improvements for that. And of course, I want to discuss the pay increase that's been proposed. And I need to know who all that will be for. Is it going to be for everybody in the town that's on the, I guess, W two? Or is it going to be just for one department? And of course, I'd like to see us put back the money on the Greenway project at the walking trail, excuse me, walking trail over there where we're gonna, we've already had 1.4 million dollars put in the budget to build those ball fields with. And those ball fields won't just be used in the evening time. Those ball fields will be used on the weekends, and this town can make between eight and $10,000 on those fields on weekend if we get them built. So that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lake. Mr. Grayman?
Get this to go out there. So, well, anyway, I really do not ask for money other than I would like to, let's keep on and try to get as much money as we can for the senior citizens slash community building. I'd like to see that at least started this year and maybe finished next year if at all possible. Other things that I have really don't cost any money other than to get our town certified local government that will open us up to a lot more grants, federal and state grants that we are not, that we don't have now. I want us to implement neighborhood town hall meetings within the neighborhoods. And I think that would be a good thing, that maybe we can go to them. I'd like to see time for lakes first, and maybe how in Baptists could let us use their church, and then more people would come, but not having to come here. And I'm going to try to get benches donated for the Greenway out there. I caught the seven businesses, and they have said yes, they would donate one and put the small, you know, sponsored by the town or donated by X, Y, Z business. And all of us could go, you know, take part of the town and go down and see how many we could get of that. Other than that, as far as money's concerned, I would like to have money for a recognition dinner for all the volunteers, possibly around December, so we could have it like a Christmas party and maybe start our Christmas party again. I know used to the police and the fire had the best Christmas parties after it, and I don't think y'all had those this year or for a few years, have you? Because of COVID. So I'd like to get, at least get that started back if we could. That's why.
Okay. Commissioner Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a lot of first aid priorities other than what we addressed at our last meeting. I guess my main concern is the pay study, finishing the pay study, making the changes necessary that we need to make. But that would, that would be my main priority, and just, just keeping up on what this board's doing now and what the previous board did as far as addressing projects that we can, that we can sure cannot get finished with. So those are, those are basically my two main priorities. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Mark. Commissioner Grohl?
I also don't have much to say because he hit on, you know, some of the points of, you know, one, we, all these projects we have started to get them completed. You know, we, we're going to have to start paying back that public safety building, so we have to be wary of how we spend money. And that's why I really don't have anything of something I really, really want to spend money on, because if anything, infrastructure needs roads, that kind of stuff. Nothing like wants, only needs infrastructure. So that's all I see.
My priorities include transportation. I don't know what the partnership with the surrounding counties in Cumberland County will look like or the FAMFO funding that's out there, but I would imagine it would still require us to have some type of funding or matching funds. The pay study, which will, the readings that we've been in will, the pay study, that will be very, it's going to be essential for us to be able to implement that, continuing the plan for the shortfall that we'll have due to the changes in the tax revenue and the grant lady, which I hate to keep calling, is her name Ingrid? Okay.
Yes.
So Ingrid, I know is working on some grants, but I don't know if any of the things that she's working on is going to, that we're going to have to do matching funds for those or it be completely funded. But I do think if she can find some grants for certain projects, it would be very, it would be smart if we would allocate some funding for that if it does lead to us needing matching funds and public art. Again, with that, I don't know if there'll be matching funds that go along with that as well, that we are able to have some opportunities when it comes to that. And of course, phase two of the Heritage Park and the Reed Derby all includes the Plainraine Splash Pad. So I didn't have any other big projects, only because I know that those things that we are working on and dealing with right now are going to cost us a lot of money. And I know with some of those positions, we're talking about the expansion of positions as well, and sometimes those come with vehicles, and we always have this debate that we can't hire the people because they, we don't have enough money to have a vehicle to go with them. I don't want us to be in that position. And long term, I would like to see us have some conversation and talk about expansion, probably a big building and the senior slash community building.
Thank you, Mayor Burdian, Dr. McCray. It was really short and to the point.
I've got one more, Mayor.
Okay, I've got, I've got a few here, but I want to hear from the board first.
I'd like to see us work on being able to add an addition to this building, preferably going to a park or a rec. We could take one of those offices out of there and make kind of a little lobby in that office with our mailboxes and some of the mailboxes and the people who work down that hallway. Does that make any sense?
Yep.
I'm going to check in my. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lake. I went back through the priorities PowerPoint slide, and I've looked at it pretty, pretty in depth about some of the needs, and I truly appreciate the departments, all of the effort and work put into it. Some of the notes that I took from that was, and I'm a firm believer in training and professional development, and I think that that's something that we need to look at for all of our town employees in this next coming year. If we need to increase that, that line item, the return on investment is huge. That's one consideration. I do have a question, I guess Beth is here, that minimum $100,000 for contracting cleaning, is that in your stormwater budget already? We're just maintaining that, correct? Okay. With all the annexation that's current and the annexation that's in front of us, from the planning department, they request an additional zoning code enforcement officer dedicated to commercial development. I really felt strong about that position, that maybe that's something we need to look at. See, we need to unfreeze the three firefighters. And hopefully, we can find the money to do that. Spend two years, you need to unfreeze those, you need that extra $10,000 for maintenance. And then the pay study is going to apply to every town employee when it's completed and every department. Now, with that said, we don't know what that final cost is going to look like, but there's two things the board's going to have to do. One of them is approve the pay study and then approve how we're going to implement that. And we're not going to do that without careful thought, careful discussion, because we want to do it right on the front end. Police Department needs five new vehicles and additional police officers if possible. Public Works has a couple of things on here that, that I was looking at, like the mosquito trucks that have been, I guess, from 1998, there's two of them, but I did have a question about the trash truck. Why do we need a trash truck if WM is taking care of trash?
We still do the yard debris collection.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Then you had another one on there, I think it was a service truck?
Yeah, the serp, the truck for the service garage in 1996.
Yeah.
With over 150,000.
Is it operational now?
They're mechanics, they keep it, they keep it running.
Yeah, I mean, it's a dinosaur, it's a Smithsonian. What are, what are the, what are the costs associated with both of these?
We haven't done the most updated sheriff's contract pricing for vehicles, but the vehicle there, they wouldn't need anything more than a two-wheel drive pickup truck. That's, they're doing parts, picking off parts and things like that.
Bruce, Bruce, stop, don't mind.
Yeah, we're looking like a two-wheel drive pickup truck for them. The trash truck is right at about 300,000.
Yeah.
We have a 2020, and then our second vehicle, it makes a thousand. So it's well, it has to be something.
What are the maintenance costs on both these vehicles?
Well, the thing of, the thing of truck is parts here and there, but any of our specialty vehicles, you know, trash trucks, back trucks, our rattle trucks, they're just very high because they're, they're specialty vehicles, they can't go to your, they can't go to your random, you know, either places, they, they have to be after a special or back to make them.
Okay.
And they're, you know, just high use, high use. In fact, we have one good one, it gets, it's all the use, so. So trying to get everything in a redundant system so that, you know, we're able to, right now, we have, you know, when we have one of something, when that truck goes down, then we're not, I like this, our back truck, we just got some new ones, a vacuum truck that can down, that's now last week, and we really feel that. Folks are calling about their lead filing, especially this part of the year.
Right.
So these are the systems that our citizens have come from.
There's one other item I've got an asterisk here and some notes, the dam drainage system. Are you familiar with that?
I am. On the, on the left side of the dam, there is an area that probably has springs. Everybody has seen the sinkhole that keeps reappearing on Main Street, where they just, you just, you break them back and like you put asphalt into it. Well, that's because there are, there are underground streams there, and they're all flowing toward the lake. That's just how it comes up. And there's just a spot on that left side of the bottom of the loaded dam that stays wet all the time, sometimes very red sometimes, so we were just looking at putting a, we had the engineers who designed the dam come up with a plan, just put a drain at that wet spot and then pipe it to the wall out. So we just, you know, we're always looking for ways, and we just, it went from dam to last 100 to 200 years, so we're always looking for these, it's not a problem right now. We've asked for this drain in the last couple budget cycles, but you know that, you know, we want to do all these things and make sure that.
Would that, would that drain get all those, the springs, all those springs instead of coming under the pavement?
I don't think, no, because that's downstream, it's downstream of the pavement, so it's really not going to affect what's happening up there. It's probably much, you actually have to open it up and move something back.
I think we ought to start checking what they're doing.
Last we talked to them, they have long-term plans for Main Street, so they're going to keep band-aiding and band-aiding.
That hole's got a lot of concrete in it.
They've been putting, long time, they're here since 07, and they've been putting asphalt in that probably over the years.
You know, Bruce, I'm just thinking, you know, maybe there is an opportunity here to work on, to work this project with DOT, since it would benefit them as well, since they're continuing to patch the hole. Then my other thought here, don't know which way this would go, but would this be considered something under the big umbrella of stormwater? Or would it be out, outside the stormwater?
It's really not, at that point, that's really groundwater.
Really groundwater.
That's what causes that. If it stays year-round, it's not just bad rain. It's just, we have, even our water table's so high here, we have so many underground, all of our water underground, but we don't have pockets, but the water, our water, it's just, just how it presents. You know, we get in neighborhoods all the time where it just presents in, you know, once areas start developing, roads start going up, the water just shifts, it comes up through yards, that's something we're just always going to have to deal with because of the high level of our groundwater.
Chancellor, do you think this would qualify for some type of FAMFO grant?
I will say that Ingrid is on fire right now with the grants. She actually met with Hank on Friday to talk about the Raze Grant and the possibility of it becoming a, the Raze Grant is really about mainly infrastructure, and what we're talking about, reason, we're not talking about building a train system, but we're talking about installing the bus system. So her approach is actually doing a region-wide plan for a bus system, but actually talk about funding later. I hadn't even had a chance to talk to PD and Fire, she's already found two grants for them. And so I think I'm very confident that whatever that we can't actually prioritize here, we can set up a meeting with Ingrid and directly with our Public Works Department, because I'm almost certain she, she's very good. And so I do think that I'm confident, because she considered this kind of stuff, what she said low-hanging fruit, because there's a lot of grant opportunities that a lot of municipalities are simply not aware of. So I do think that that's something where we can fill some gaps.
They should qualify for public structure.
Yeah, without question. And that's why we have Ingrid.
Yeah, that's exactly why.
This is one of the very many reasons why we have her, is to pursue projects just like this one.
And so Bruce, I can, Ash and I could facilitate some this week, but I haven't seen down with it.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've seen the email where, I think Ashley Wood sent it maybe, about talking about if we have her sitting in a meeting, would that count towards her billable hours? See, that's my concern, like, how can we, you know, use her resources wisely without, you know?
I think what Ash and I were saying, coming to one of these would probably not be recommended, but facilitating just a 20-minute Zoom meeting with Public Works for them to tell, or we can even do it through email, for them to tell her, hey, in addition to what we actually talked about in our initial meeting, could you go after this? Because we never, we didn't know about the Raze Grant when we met with her initially. After a FAMFO meeting was presented, I shot her a quick email, within two days, she had a full Teams meeting with the whole team and the whole FAMFO staff. And that was this past Friday. And so I think we can think harder, work harder, not, you know, smarter, not harder, but I think what we sent out earlier was just concerns about coming to a three-hour session as opposed to just networking and letting her, making her aware of.
Yeah, because like, we have, we have to use resource, and I don't want to abuse the resource, I'm like, I want to use.
Now, I will say too, that the plan, at least my master plan, is to utilize this service at such a high level, and we heard this from the group that started, that we initially engaged with, that we justify the use of it, that they were actually standard at the end of 2026. And so that's one of the reasons why we talked about a mayor's coalition. If we get every one of the municipalities in this region, in this county, to utilize this particular program, we're sending the message to the state that this entire county is engaging this. And I think that would go to a long length and a long way in terms of allowing it to extend beyond with the current, at least that's my long-term goal.
That was my question about the billable hours. If she comes up with a regional plan, is, are we going to be filled and charged for her coming up with a regional plan for everybody?
I don't think she would come up with a regional plan. She would come up with the actual grant to be able to fund the regional program. And so she wouldn't be actually consulting to do the plan. She is the person that realized that the Raze Grant has a larger percentage that is tied to money that funds the infrastructure and construction of transportation, but she found a small portion that funds an actual study. So she would be the person that would, that secured the grant funding to actually hire a consultant to do the study, but that wouldn't, she wouldn't actually use up billable hours and do the plan.
And so I had my first FAMFO meeting, and that was one of the things, because you had talked too at the end, like Spring Lake and even parts of Fayetteville, we get like with transportation, it's great if we put in for a grant, but if we get Spring Lake and Fayetteville, get this whole trip, everyone working together to get that grant so we can all have, you know, link to mass transit, you know, it'll come out really, really good. So that was something we discussed.
Okay. The key word here is regional.
Yes.
That encompasses ominous values in Cumberland County, and that's how we've discussed it. It's on one, it's on my list too, to see what we can do for a regional bus transportation program during the mayor's coalition on Friday, that was discussed as well. The city's mayor, Pro Tim Captain Jensen, has a lot of work that you've worked with her on the same proposal of how to start this and establish this. I mean, there's, there is a need in the county for this, and we're just one spoke on the wheel, and that's why it's regional. I'd like to see us come back and start the comprehensive strategic plan, Drew, that we started probably, what, four years ago? I'd like to see us.
That was finished last year? The lead finished that. But we're going to do something different with some council training that will take that to the next step. We got some training coming up that will take that strategic plan to the next step. Because we started one before the pandemic.
Right.
That kind of stopped it.
It did.
And then the previous mayor contacted the league municipalities to come in and do one, so we never finished the one that we had previously started. We did one through the lead, that one was completed, but it's kind of like strategic plan in a can, is the way that I see it. So I would like, like to get back to the one that we had originally started, and it will be kind of incorporated into the training at the start later this spring.
The one we started four years ago prior to COVID was department-driven and community-driven. It wasn't anything about a can, but that's where the parts and pieces came for that one, and that's the one I'm talking about through, is going back and resurrecting that one, because that's the workable plan, for the department to deliver the services to our community, and it's input from both ways. That's the kind of plan I'm looking at bringing back. And I know actually, if she's still involved.
She will be, yes.
Yeah. She started this. She started this process at, uh, one of the retreats, I think in 18, maybe, 19.
It's a while back.
It's been a while back.
Mayor? I want to take a quick second while I'm here. Address the question that Commissioner Lake asked. The first question about the multi-use path in front of the lake. We're in the final stages of that, of, of, we're about ready to get that along the ground. We're in the final stage, we need to approve the plan. DOT is administering that through the FAMFO grant. So everything has to go through them, you know, through their approval process. It's kind of, you know, slows things down a little bit, makes them on the bottom of the pond. So we're waiting on one last approval for the appro, the approach, the improvement, for them to approve the improvement plan. And right now, it is set for let for construction on March 8th.
Does that mean more concrete?
That means 10 feet wide, six feet thick, all the way across.
I know a lot of people have contacted me, and I'm sure they have, they've worn out some before. They do not want that, like that type of change from the deck, white, white path. They want that.
We're not, yeah, we're not concerned with the name and Public Works. We're just, we're going to start it.
Well, I'm saying that for all the.
There's no plans on our end to make any changes.
And, and I'll add, um.
We're just upgrading.
I think that Bruce hit it on the head. We're just make, uh, upgrade the actual trail. We're not tied in, renaming that.
The simple sign made up, you know, that this path is lighter. DOT standards, all of the use paths, 10 feet wide, we had it reconstructed, 10 feet wide. So that kind of, some of the project now, a little bit, excuse me, because we have to re-engineer. They will be 10 feet wide and all the way across to connect, we're going behind the, uh, going behind the mark.
Well, that's the way I take it too, Bruce. I, I don't think, there's been no discussion on retaining at all. It's all, it's all about.
Because it's, it's rumors and people, they've, they've never discussed.
No, we, we've never had a discussion on the name itself. Our entire conversation, um, including the grant, uh, with FAMFO, was just basically redoing the path. At least I'm not aware of any discussion formally within elected order, at my level, renaming that path.
I did not get a complaint about changing the name. I just simply got a question about improvements to the path. I guess there's some roots growing under somewhere, uh, possibly asphalt, walkway up. I don't know where it is, I don't know, I'm told that. So I told my old buddy up to see if we can correct it.
I will add too, if you notice that the managers report, I've started to put the updates on, uh, our construction projects. So I'll make sure this is one that remains and the updates are typically.
And it's also included in the Public Works part of the agenda pack, and this is the top of December, the last one. And that's where I was looking at through here, is that entroachment permitted in DOT? And that was the question, and I, and I think that's where we still are, right Bruce?
Yes, sir, it's all we're waiting.
Yeah, it's all we're waiting on, we're still waiting on that to go forward. All right. That's the regional bus transportation program was on my list, Community Rec Center, Senior Center. Still looking for a town museum, I don't know if we can get one, but still looking for that. And something else, the last thing I wanted to share, and I, I plucked this out of this priorities, is that, uh, I looked at the request from Parks and Rec regarding the tennis courts and where they are. And $55,000 to fix them. And how valuable that space would be. So a thought came that that space could really be used by Public Works. If we were to look at doing something a little different. And that's moving the tennis courts with pickleball to the former golf course. Is moving it, instead of putting the $55,000 on where they are now in that corner, is completely moving them and rededicating that space to, to Public Works. They need the space, they need to build it. This would be a really good addition to have out there on the golf course. Four tennis courts, not two, four of them, with stripes or pickleball. And, and Commissioner Lake, just think about all the tournaments that can happen out there. And, and I'm not a pickleball person, uh, but I will become one, I guess.
I am in favor of anything that will help us raise money for Parks and Rec so we can stay ahead of, I shouldn't say can't wait. Anyway, so we can keep up with the rest of the county.
This would be an opportunity, if we could look at and think about doing this. And also put out there a large picnic shelter, something very similar to what we're voting on tonight during our regular meeting, for the inclusive playground, with, with the picnic table package. I think that would really be a great addition out there on the golf course, if we could look at doing something like that for our citizens. So I've got that, and I pulled that one from the, from the packet. I don't know if we can afford it, because we're looking at that pay study and how we're gonna implement that. And then some vehicles and some additional personnel for the town. But it is, it is a goal to look at. Well. I, I think if we tie it to, to senior citizens, I think we may be able to, Ingrid could probably buy us some grant money to do it. We can also go back to the well of our great parted grants. Now that we're finishing up on Heritage Park, we could make a new application for another part of grants to do it as well. I think the only way probably that we're gonna get this and a number of projects that our citizens so would like to see us have in our community is all gonna be funded partly through what Ingrid can find out for us. And that's why we have, we've got her out of the gate. Now, we've got some meetings coming up here in the next, during this month with, with, uh, tomorrow, we've got some meetings with the county officials. February 19th, we're gonna meet with our legislators. Uh, after that, it all culminates into the budget retreat, which is, uh, March 7th. But, uh, I think it's March 4th, the committees, each of the town committees will, chairpersons will present their budgets to the board in March. Uh, then it all culminates together in the, uh, budget retreat on March 7th. So we'll see what the needs are, what we can fund, what Drew can help us fund or find, along with Ingrid. And that's where that process is going to, uh, to come together. So.
We have to talk about hiring the receptionist.
Yeah, that's on my list too, the receptionist.
We have to do that, but we have to help with the public.
Here's the good part about the receptionist, is that I have the description, thank you Ashley for sending it to me. I have pushed that out on campus to Nora. And we're looking for internship and part-time, uh, receptionists to come in from eight, 8:30 to 12, and from 12 to 5, I think I'm right, Ashley, am I correct? So it's two shifts. There's one, we've already got a hit on, on campus, there's a gentleman, it's a retired guy, he can only work like 20 hours a week. He, he already wants to, to look at this position. Uh, so, and then we've got some other interns and some student interests in our, um, office administration program as well. This is a, just a really great opportunity. If we approach this in a part-time way, we can save some money there and then have office coverage, uh, throughout the day at the receptions. Because we've got the space, we've got the equipment to do it, we just have to have the right person to come in and do that. So it's, it's on, it's on my list, and, and like I said, thanks Ashley, she just sent me the, uh, the job description. So I'll just push that out. Okay, anything else?
Me.
Here for them.
I just wanted to, um, ask Mr. Morrison, so we're talking about possibly moving the tennis courts down, so that, um, they fall. Uh, are we still having, are we having a conversation about possibly moving the skate park as well? And I guess helping factor that into what our, what our amount of need to help take that.
Good question.
Um, so the first part, so we, we are having talks about the, um, the skate park, already got a location for it. Um, had our initial meetings with the gentleman, with, um, um, citizens for skate parks. And so, um, so I wasn't the second piece of that, but, um, I, I, so, so, um, and talking to Vic Williams and, um, um, Mr. Grumman, I forget his first name. Terry. Um, so their timeline is between two and a half and three years. So, um, and, and, and so Mr. Williams, um, wanted, wanted me to convey that, you know, this is, this is almost a three-year commitment within the raised money. And so I'm thinking, either we can allocate the money now and just, um, have it set aside, or we do have two years to come up with money, it was a strain on our budget. So, um, it kind of similar, we, we, we could consider kind of similar to what we did for the Park Tech Grant, where direct to split our $325,000 match in the two budget years to kind of, you know, um, sure, I mean, to kind of.
Ease the burden.
Yeah, ease the burden a little bit. So, so we have options, either we can put the two in, um, because we, I, I wanna say we committed $250,000. We can, we can certainly put it all aside now, or, um, we have the option to split it up in, into years as, as, you know, the, uh, that group raised their money.
All right. Thank you, Lamarcus. Any, any other questions for the board?
I would just like to see us get away from pulling money out of the money that was set aside to start construction on the ball fields. Uh, every time we take a dollar away, it's hard to get it back. And, uh, that's the reason that I asked when that money was made available. That it be dedicated just for the ball fields. Because of the money or the revenue that that can bring in. And now we're talking about the pickleball court, stuff going on there. I don't know that, I don't know if they charge them to play pickleball. I don't think they're gonna need to roll. But if they did, uh, certainly that money could go to the same thing. Thank you, sir.
Thanks so much, Lake. Anybody else? Have a motion to adjourn our special budget meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. We'll, uh, we'll pick up a regular meeting in 15 minutes.